Time is seven o'clock and we'll call the order of the city council meeting for September 26, 2016 in council chambers. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Here.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Tonight we'll have invocation by Mr. Jones. Good for not being received, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll all please rise.
Go up our head, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this gathering tonight. It's always wonderful to have all our assistants together. I'm pleased to remind everybody that we are neighbors and family and friends and we all care each other civilly and we pray, as always, for our police and fire forces, keep them safe, and we thank you for the coming of the Father. We do pray amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Item four is the approval of motion summary of the regular meeting of council held September 12th, 2016, as reported and transcribed. What is the wish of council?
Move for approval.
Second?
I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. DeGenova. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes, motion carries. I was the consent agenda. Elaine, if you'll please read this on the record.
Item A, acceptance of the motion summary for the Civil Service Commission meeting held July 6, 2016. Item B, resolution number 16-44, a resolution accepting the public improvements for Belmont Place, Phase 1, Section 2. Item C, resolution number 16-45, a resolution appointing members to various boards, commissions, and/or committees, and specifying the term of the appointments.
Thank you. What's the wish of council on the consent agenda?
Move for approval. Consent pending.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Rohr. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Howinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes, motion carries. Item six is time set aside for letters, petitions, or public comments for anything that is not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward at this time? You'll come forward to the table, please, and give me your name and address for the record.
My name is... Should I sit down?
Sure.
My name is John Feller and I reside at 77 Griswold Street on the corner of Griswold and Liberty. I got a prepared statement. I've never gone before at council before, so I'd just like to read, hopefully keep this under a couple minutes. I'm representing tonight a small group of homeowners in the area over the concern of a rental property. The house has proven to be an ongoing nuisance in the eight years I've lived at this location and as much as 15 years from the other homeowners I've spoken with and speak for today. The homeowner has a long history of neglect of the condition of the property, a poor screening process of tenants, no requirements of tenants to maintain the property themselves, and take no ownership in representing his investment in a way that is acceptable to the neighborhood it resides in. Communication with the homeowner by neighbors over the years has been met with noninterest. I could create a list of 100 concerns easily based on my experience and the stories of the neighbors, but the primary concerns break down to just a few things. The quality and safety of the property to tenants and neighbors is unacceptable. The maintenance of the property by the owner and tenants is nonexistent. The quality and actions of the tenants doesn't represent the community which it resides in. There is a staggering amount of traffic a simple two-unit property generates on any given day. It's not unheard of to see 20 or 30 vehicles a day stop. Many are friends and family, with a lot of time on their hands, I should add, but many are new faces and vehicles that stop for a minute, sometimes never shutting off the car and never to be seen again, but just run into the house and leave. Others park half a block away and around the corner even knowing there's parking directly in front of the property. Possible drug activity over the years ranging from selling to just being a party house has been our primary concern. If one tenant leaves, the cycle always seems to begin again. Welfare of unattended children who are constantly locked out of the property is a concern for every person who walks down the street. Safety for neighbors, our children, and our guests by aggressive and inebriated tenants and their acquaintances, and even our pets have been allegedly targeted by those associated with the property. I did a little research on the property and talked to such people as Metro Housing Authority and had some wonderful conversations with their representative. There really wasn't much they could help with on the matter, but I found it fascinating that over 450 recipients, I think the number's close to 480, of Metro 8 in Delaware County receive MHA assistance, and without giving her specific information, she knew exactly what tenant and property I was talking with just based on my general vicinity of what I was talking about. Neighbors of the property being discussed have shown more care for the property's exterior than the owner or tenants. This includes on occasion cutting their grass, snow removal, landscaping, and safety of the grounds for the tenant's children. Just today, my wife saw one of the neighbors sweeping their deck and putting flowers on it, just in a rogue attempt to make it a little better. I would argue that visually this house is one of the worst in the northwest Delaware area, not because of its owner without resources or skill to maintain, but simply by choice. The property is nothing more than a profit center for an owner on the backs of the taxpayers but offers no return to the community in which it resides. It doesn't uphold any written or unwritten standards of that said community. I had to stop myself several times to use a word choice that we all know when we see a property and the kind of landlord that owns it, but it's a derogatory comment at its core, but the property and its landlord fit the definition across the board. So, it is our wish the city council could discuss the property with the city and see if there are any concerns with the property and its management from their legal perspectives. I guess that's the proper word choice to use. We also hope that the council can assist in facilitating a face-to-face meeting with the owner and the concerned neighbors or representative to air grievances that may not align with the concerns of the city. I welcome any questions or comments on this matter. That's it.
Madam Mayor, if I may, if you recall, I forward an email to Mr. Feller, everybody, and I think Chief DeGenova was included on that, so you probably have to speak for the proper discussing, and I introduced Mr. Feller to, as his council rep, so I think now that we have Mr. F1 in the loop too, so I just want to make sure everybody knows exactly what we're talking about. Was that email I sent about a month ago, maybe?
Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me, I am familiar with the property and it was discussed at the Northwest Neighborhood Association meeting two meetings ago. I know that Chief Pichonowski sent Captain Herning to the meeting and the property was discussed there, and I think there's been an increased police presence in the area since then, but it's definitely a property I'm aware of. I will notify the proper staff to look into any sort of building infractions as well.
Okay.
Sheila, also here taking notes. She lives at the Health Department.
I'm sorry? Oh, okay.
I'm with the Health District. I don't know that there's any, I don't know the property you're speaking of.
Gotcha.
I'd be happy to have a staff member go out and if there are issues related to public health laws, we'd be happy to.
I believe you guys were notified very recently through a neighbor of it too who was approaching it from your angle too, to review the property, so. And, you know, I guess, I believe it's 143 North Liberty. It's a dual unit, so I always get the number a little off, but, okay, pretty good. And like I said, if there's nothing from a more specific matter, it's just wanting to know if the board can help facilitate a discussion with a absent landlord, so. That's all.
All right, thank you very much.
Take care.
I'd like to comment on it, and Dave and I just had a conversation on one at Hawthorne. It took us, what, five, six years, Dave, maybe longer? At least six years, Stratford Woods had a situation where the landlord lived in Pennsylvania, and we finally got the property condemned, and it went on auction, and a local resident who buys properties like that, hopefully, but, so it might be something that's going to take a while to, not going to wiggle our nose and say it's going to be done in thirty days.
Yeah, it's been a process or something, so a little more time. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come forward at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to the committee reports. Mr. Jones?
I have nothing here.
Mrs. Keller?
I have none.
Mr. DeGenova?
We're on committee reports. Finance had a work session on two subject matters, Refuge for Apartments and Oak Grove Cemetery, and it was quite lengthy, and staff's going to be working on getting back to us probably not until after the first year due to CIP and budgeting process, because they're really tied down, and with 11. So, we will have an answer for you on those, both of subject matters.
Thank you.
HPC is meeting Wednesday at 7:00.
Okay. Mr. Howinger?
Shade Tree meets tomorrow night.
All righty. Mr. Schaefer?
Public Utilities, Public Works, next Tuesday, 4/17.
Okay. All righty, with that, we'll move on to presentations, and first, Health Department update from Sheila Hiddleston. She's our Health Commissioner.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for letting me come to speak this evening. I did ask your clerk to pass...
You gave me your name and address. I know we all know.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Sheila Hiddleston, Health Commissioner with the Delaware General Health District. I am representing the Health District tonight, although I am a resident of Delaware City at 502 West Williams Street.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Thank you for letting me come tonight. I just came to give you a little brief update on what's going on with the Health District and also a couple of things that we're working on with Tom and some of the members of the city. I gave you some handouts that are at your tables. The first one is called "In Your Neighborhood," and that's a service that we offer to folks who don't want to have to come all the way down to the Health District, which for most of the city residents, it's not that big of a deal, but we are out and about throughout the county at various times during the month, and the nurses will review medications with clients, talk to them about false safety, we can do immunizations, and of course, we're always at the Health District for your residents, but we also are at the Georgetown Senior Apartments. We go down there on a regular basis as well. Another handout that you have is our newborn home visit information. We provide, public health nurses provide in-home home visits to any new mom and babe. There are no requirements whatsoever, and the nurse goes into the home upon being asked. It's not something that we mandate. We'll go into the home, we do an assessment of the mother, an assessment of the baby, help make sure that the mom and the babe are hooked up with all of the appropriate services. It's a really, really beneficial visit. It is free to the mom, all they have to do is ask, and we're truly trying to promote that. One of the assessments that our nurses do is a postpartum depression screening, and you would probably be amazed at the number of young moms particularly who lack resources and maybe lack that family support that are actually experiencing some postpartum depression, and we're able to talk with them about the resources that are in the community and get them some help if they need it. So, it's a really valuable program. And then the third thing I brought you is just an update on the Zika virus. We are still continuing to see Zika throughout the world. In Ohio, we've only had 43 cases, and all of those were folks who had traveled outside of Ohio with the exception of one which was sexually transmitted and the partner had been outside of Ohio. We continue to collect mosquitoes. We will do that until the first frost. You should be receiving your mosquito Monday update. We also did get some additional traps this year that will trap the 80s albopictus, which is the secondary spreader of the Zika virus, and we have had a couple of traps that we've trapped those in. We currently can't test to see if they have Zika. That's not a test that's readily available yet. And then we did have three pools positive for West Nile this year, and one of them was in Delaware, so we did fog here. Couple of other things that you probably read about, we have had a large crypto outbreak this summer related to swimming pools, and just so you're aware, the swimming pools here in Delaware were all asked to voluntarily do some hyperchlorination if we did not have any cases linked to them, and they all voluntarily did that, and then we did have one case, I don't know how many cases, I shouldn't say that. We did have some cases actually linked to a pool, and we had the pool do it again, and they were all very cooperative. Our staff, our registered sanitarians, have also asked all pools upon closing to hyperchlorinate, and then asking them next summer before they open to hyperchlorinate, because this is very virile little bacteria that we've got here, and it can actually winter. So, we want to make sure when we open next year that it, we've gotten it taken care of, we hope. We've had over 90 in Delaware County, and our total Franklin, Columbus Public Health and us, over 800 cases that we've had. And then the last thing I wanted to share is we are working with our Creating Healthy Communities grant. Tom has met now with our new health educator, Abby Trimble. They had a really good conversation, and there's a lot of new things that are going to be coming up, and one of them is they're looking into possibly being able to do a bike share program here in Delaware where bikes would be available for folks to use at no cost to them, and they're still working out all of the details, and Officer Hatcher has been working with Abby on that. So, those are my updates. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about any of these things or anything else.
Any questions? All right, well, thank you very much for coming this evening.
Well, you're welcome, and we'll see you soon.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may, on presentation, you have A and B. Can I squeeze something in real quick?
Sure.
We have all these people here.
Sure.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I'll take my thunder. No, just kidding.
I didn't hear what you said.
I said, "You can take my thunder."
All right. Well, if I could, if I could have the mayor join me up front here, I'd appreciate that. She might have a bad to making fun of me.
That's okay.
This is Peter Joe.
Aw, thank you.
You have a good day, what's going on?
No, I'm not.
This is going to be brief, but I've lived in Delaware for about 25 years, and I had to say, first year I lived in Delaware, I heard the name Carolyn K. Rigg all the time. Carolyn K. Rigg. And I got the... Yes, true. If there was a fundraiser, if there was an event, or something the community needed, Carolyn K. Rigg was always involved and always there, always has been, and I'm sure always will be. If you're not familiar or recall, about a month ago, we had the Ironman here in town. That's a big deal. I mean, it's a worldwide organization, it's a worldwide thing that was in Delaware, and Carolyn took it upon herself, and she became, what was it called?
Volunteer coordinator.
And how many volunteers did you have to coordinate?
1,400.
1,400 people. And she took it upon herself, and a lot of people here at City Hall did a fantastic job. And so, all my colleagues and I, we wanted to give Carolyn a proclamation like she does all the time, but it comes from the mayor's office. Without it was goofy, the mayor could have just up a proclamation. So, you know, this isn't, we've all signed this, this is appreciation for your recognition for the Ironman, but more important for everything you've done for the city, and always have and will always will. We hope to take these flowers and just love you, and to be a best job as a mayor, beyond being a mayor, just your involvement has meant so much to the community, so on behalf of everybody, thank you so much.
She's done so much for veterans also. She's been on the Honor Flight, she's a member of one of our organizations, the Vietnam Veterans Association, and she was very helpful in the memorial that we built out at the YMCA. And I know that the Ironman's two more years, too.
Two more years.
So, we have a three-year contract.
I'm on flight Saturday.
Okay. How many Honor flights have you been on?
Ten.
Ten.
Let's just count. So, Jim and Pam, I'm going to have you come forward.
Yes. But Pam, I think you need to come forward too, because I know what you do behind us. You never get rid of professional force.
You guys have freaks.
Come on. I know, I know. So, when I first heard, I'm going to cry, when I first heard that vintage was going to stop doing the car show, I got really upset, and I just think what you guys have done for our community, for us, and for all those lives, that meant so much too, that I just, I intend to do something to thank you for what you've done. Try making through this, but you're already crying. Whereas the city of Delaware has a responsibility to recognize occasions of us standing to the limit, and whereas the Vintage Auto Club of Delaware held its 23rd and final Blast from the Past Car Show, July 23, 2016, in Delaware, and whereas the Blast from the Past Car Show has generated significant economic stimulus for our community from many car show participants and thousands of spectators. Whereas during its successful run, the Blast from the Past Car Show and other activities generated more than $265,000 for hospice in Delaware, and whereas the Blast from the Past Car Show has made possible through the hard work and dedication of the vintage auto club volunteers led by Jim Harder and Jim Clemm, now therefore I, Carolyn K. Riggle, Mayor of the City of Delaware, Ohio, to hereby issue a proclamation and thank whole Vintage Auto Club for sponsoring and organizing the Blast from the Past Car Show for its commitment to our community.
If you'd like to say a few words?
Yes, I'd like to say that Carolyn also volunteers. The whole 16 years we've been downtown at the car show, and without this group back here, we couldn't have done, and we really kind of feel bad about stopping it, but hopefully someone else will continue with the car show in downtown Delaware. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Betsy, are you here?
Yeah, thank you.
Betsy Rowley?
Betty.
Oh, I'm sorry, Betsy Rowley, she's here from the Development Director of Ohio Health. You want to say a few words?
I would love to, if I may. I just want to echo the thanks from the mayor and from council on behalf of Ohio Health and the foundation and Great Memorial Hospital since 1993, has been giving of themselves for hospice patients in the Delaware community, and any of us who have experienced hospice within our family knows, once you've experienced it, you want to ensure that it's available for anyone who needs it. And your community, your club has done that for 23 years. So, thank you so much. The over $265,000 you've raised has helped us ensure that just last year, 300 patients and their families in our community received the hospice care that they needed, and we can expect that that's going to continue to be in need in our community. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. We'll miss you, but we're grateful above all else for all that you've done.
So, this is normally the key to the city, but this is the key to the hearts for all of you in Delaware, to your health, so thank you. And with that, I have an announcement, a very exciting announcement. Denny Freeman, please. This is Denny Freeman.
Right.
And he is with Performance Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram. And he is going to take over the Blast from the Past Car Show.
Well, I did, you know, our company presents to you that you don't know. We've got four locations in Columbus, so we've got Performance of Georgeville, Honda Marysville, Toyota Direct, and then our store right here at 315 and 23. I've been with the company for quite a while, I'm still over at the Toyota Store. I've lived in Delaware, so I got the opportunity to come up to the Delaware store. It's been awesome. Last week, I was involved in the fair, the auctions from the 4H. I got to see all the kids and the animals. It's an awesome community. Cars, of course, are my passion, that's what we do. The other side of it is, as a kid, I got to go to car shows for my dad. I know that some of those are my favorite memories, and we want to keep that going, keep supporting the community, and I think, hopefully, I can get some help from some people. But, you know, we got a lot of people on our staff that can help as well, you know, just to kind of rest assured, we have a lady that organizes the Columbus Car Show downtown, the one in Cincinnati, and then we also locally do one in Marysville along with now Dallas, we're going to take on the one in Dallas this year. So, looking forward to it. Be happy for any suggestions, recommendations, make sure everyone gets my contact info and feel free to communicate.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I went in to talk to Denny, ended up buying a car. That's what they deserve.
Start out with a couple.
You can also get a shot. That's a girl.
Come on up, one chance, come on up. Just stand out from either side of your group up here. Nice and tidy, like you still like each other. Just do a single line, just do a single file all the way across, and try and get, get the line in.
Wednesday night, Thursday, we're way back to the Congress. It's been a Thursday, back to town.
You missed some?
Yeah.
All right, now everybody just kind of turn your bodies, yes, inside, but there you go, now let it rain. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I think you have a half a mile to walk, Roger.
Let's give them a little tonight. Good night, thank you very much. Yeah, that's why I said, thank you.
That's why, that's why I jumped in early, because I knew they were asking.
Thank you very much.
7:30. If you'll please read this on the record.
Ordinance number 16-85, an ordinance amending sections of the City of Delaware's codified ordinances pertaining to parking and traffic. Sections 197.02, fee schedule as it pertains to parking tickets. 351.03 prohibits standing or parking places. 351.14 heavy vehicles and trailers, and 351.19 enforcement violation notice waiver.
Thank you.
Sometimes you have cars that park a little too far forward, too far back, and tie up two spaces, or park too far out towards the street. And we'll cite, and actually, we do cite for that. It happens. Mid-block crossing is the next one, 351.03. This is an adjustment in response to really the parking situation on North Union Street due to the construction. There's a lot of parking on the street now, and there is a mid-block crosswalk. But our ordinance for parking adjacent to a crosswalk addresses crosswalks at an intersection. So, in this section, we just are striking at an intersection. It will therefore make it illegal to park within 20 feet of any crosswalk, be it at an intersection or mid-block. The next is just reclassifying our language regarding parking of heavy trucks on streets in 351.14. It goes away from the one-ton terminology to a class terminology. It doesn't change the ordinance, it just changed the language to be more reflective of what the federal government is using. And the last one is 351.19. It corrects our penalty schedule for handicap parking to come into compliance with the Ohio Revised Code, which actually has said that we need, you know, we can establish our own fee schedule, but it has to be consistent with the minor, or with the penalty set in the Ohio Revised Code being $250, at least $250 for the first offense, and no more than $500 for the third offense.
And that's, that's an increase for the...
The first offense is an increase. We went from $40 for our first offense, but our subsequent offenses after four offenses could have went up to $1,000. We have never written a $1,000 handicap ticket, but this will definitely hurt the pocketbook of someone who gets a first.
Yes.
It was only $40?
Mr. Hellinger?
Correct.
Yes.
That's horrible.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
We had never changed really any of these things until we updated it, so probably
Yes.
Mayor Riegel?
Yes.
Question carries.
it was long overdue.
Thank you. Having a mother in a wheelchair, I wholly support this 100%. Okay, we'll move back up to item nine and 10.
So, those are the four, four items that we're cleaning up.
Chief, how many, how many handicap violation parking tickets do you give on average in
I think we can read together.
Ordinance number 16-77.
a year? Is that a...
I could find out, but I just, just to pull it up.
An ordinance approving a final subdivision plan for Westport Homes for Lantern Chase,
Any idea, just kind of throw out?
You know, we have, we have our park control officers are downtown all the time, so they
Phase Two, Section Six, Part Two, consisting of 45 single-family lots on approximately
are written. I can't, I'm not going to tell you, it's not uncommon.
30.316 acres, Zoned R3.
I just, I just don't have a number.
Okay. Thank you.
One-family residential district and located on Glennsbury Drive, Canot Place, Cedar Creek
Any further questions for you?
Street, and Lanthorn Pond Drive.
Well, this is a public hearing, so I'll close it and I'll open it up to the public.
Ordinance number 16-78. An ordinance approving a final subdivision plan, Westport Homes for Lantern Chase, Phase
Does anyone in the audience that would like to come forward at this time?
Two, Section Six, Part Three, consisting of 35 single-family lots on approximately
Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And what is the wish of council for ordinance 16-85?
8.049 acres, Zoned R3. One-family residential district and located on Canot Place and Marblehead Drive.
Make the motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings.
Thank you.
Second.
Hello, Ms. Japplin, how are you? I have a motion by Mr. Jones, a second by Mr. Schaefer.
Hello, Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm good, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
This is the second reading for these two ordinances that would approve sections, the
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
last sections in Lantern Chase subdivision, shown here on the screen as a part three in green and part two in yellow. Part one in blue has previously been approved by council. And those are the last three sections in this subdivision that will complete its construction. So, happy to answer any questions you may have. We did present this last time.
Any questions for Dave? Okay. What is the wish of council? Would you like to take it to another one? Would you like to vote tonight?
I'll move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance 16-77. Second.
Question by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. DeGenova. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riegel?
Yes.
Move for the approval of ordinance 16-78. Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. DeGenova. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riegel?
Yes.
Question carries. Thank you. Okay, we'll move back up to item nine and 10. I think we can read together.
Ordinance number 16-77. An ordinance approving a final subdivision plan for Westport Homes for Lantern Chase, Phase Two, Section Six, Part Two, consisting of 45 single-family lots on approximately 30.316 acres, Zoned R3. One-family residential district and located on Glennsbury Drive, Canot Place, Cedar Creek Street, and Lanthorn Pond Drive. Ordinance number 16-78. An ordinance approving a final subdivision plan, Westport Homes for Lantern Chase, Phase Two, Section Six, Part Three, consisting of 35 single-family lots on approximately 8.049 acres, Zoned R3. One-family residential district and located on Canot Place and Marblehead Drive.
Thank you. Hello, Ms. Japplin, how are you?
Hello, Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm good, thank you. This is the second reading for these two ordinances that would approve sections, the last sections in Lantern Chase subdivision, shown here on the screen as a part three in green and part two in yellow. Part one in blue has previously been approved by council. And those are the last three sections in this subdivision that will complete its construction. So, happy to answer any questions you may have. We did present this last time.
Any questions for Dave? Okay. What is the wish of council? Would you like to take it to another one? Would you like to vote tonight?
I'll move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance 16-77. Second.
Question by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. DeGenova. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riegel?
Yes.
Question carries.
Move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance 16-78. Second.
Question by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. DeGenova. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riegel?
Yes.
Move for the approval of ordinance 16-78. Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. DeGenova. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riegel?
Yes.
Move for the approval of ordinance 16-78. Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. DeGenova. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riegel?
Yes.
Question carries. And item 11 is the second reading of ordinance number 16-80. Elaine, if you'll please read this on the record.
Ordinance number 16-80. An ordinance supplementing the 2016 appropriations ordinance to increase funding for the design of the Glen Parkway Extension north to Berlin Station Road.
And I believe Dean's going to take this, I'm sure he wasn't able to be here this evening.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This supplemental appropriation is to provide money to start the design of the Glen Road Extension up to Berlin Station, as indicated. This project's been somewhat on the drawing board for a while, trying to work out all the details. Going into the 2016 budget, we weren't very sure that it was going to move forward, so thus we didn't appropriate any money, plus we weren't quite sure what the scope of the project was going to, going to be. Things have fallen into place, and at this point, we're ready to move forward with the actual project. This provides design money to start now. I think there's a timeline in there that Bill talks about as far as actual construction in 2018. It's a pretty big project. Funding for it will come from the TIF monies that we're collecting out there to pay for this, so this isn't money out of general fund or any other road revenue source. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. I noted here that Bill had suggested approval at a second reading. I don't believe there's an emergency clause, but I think they are poised, they want to stay somewhat on a timeline. I think partly because of the announcement of the all-entangency school opening up, they want to make sure they can, since we're going to do this anyways, try to get it done before that actually opens up in 2018. Would that entertain any questions you may have?
Any questions? So, this isn't getting us over Berlin Station, it's just preparing.
This actually will connect to Berlin at grade. The original thought several years ago, when a lot of this area is being proposed for development, was that we would perhaps put a bridge over the, but that, a long time ago, became impractical to do, at least now. So, but Bill and our engineering department have worked pretty closely with the county engineer, and the project's going to be designed and/or constructed in such a way that if at some point in time, funding does become available, and it's necessary to do so, that it would be, that a, you know, bridge over the railroad track could be constructed. This connects the road to Berlin Station, so at least, you know, the Glen Road doesn't stub out enough in the field.
Any other questions? This is still pondering. Okay, I just, I'm sorry, ask. No, I think I understood. When I read it at home, I misunderstood. But I, I got it. Got it? Okay.
Any further discussion? I move that we suspend the rules requiring three readings on 16-80. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. DeGenova, a second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riegel?
Yes.
Question carries. And item 13. Can you zoom all together? No, do them individually. Yes. Item 13, Elaine, if you'll please read this on the record.
Ordinance number 16-89. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $4,250,000 for the purpose of paying the cost of refunding bonds previously issued by the city, for the purpose of paying the cost of various public infrastructure projects and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause, this ordinance is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, property, health, safety, and welfare of the city, and for the further reason that this ordinance is required to be immediately effective in order to issue and sell the bonds, which is necessary to enable the city to take advantage of favorable interest rates and realize the savings and interest costs by refunding the refunded bonds, and to coordinate the sale of the bonds with other bonds of the city. Wherefore, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Yay! Goodness. Mr. Stotzer.
I wish you could read all of them, or do you want to...
I'll do them, I guess, one at a time.
Okay. This, this ordinance authorizes the city to issue bonds to refinance an existing outstanding bond issued that the city did in 2006. Purpose being to lower our interest costs, and depending on the rates that we actually get, it's anticipated that we'll save upwards of $600,000 over the next 15 years in interest cost on these bonds by reissuing them. Entertained, any questions you may have?
Finance committee had some discussion with Dean on these two months ago, a month and a half. He knew he was going to bring it forward before the end of the year, so they, the committee unanimously supports this action.
When the bonds were issued in 2006, they were called, they were 25-year bonds, but they were callable in 10 years, which December 1st, they, I can call those bonds. And the new bonds will be for 15 years also, so it's not like we're pushing back and reissuing them for a longer term.
$600,000 is pretty good.
I shared with the airport committee that a portion of that original issue was for the teehangers out at the airport, and we still have to pay 15 more years on those new teehangers we constructed several years ago, but the interest reduction alone is $10,000, over $10,000 just for the paying back those teehangers, so it'll help.
What is the wish of council on ordinance 16-89?
Move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on 16-89. Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Jones. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riegel?
Yes.
A move for the approval of 16-89. Move for the approval of the emergency clause of 16-89. Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Jones. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riegel?
Yes.
Question carries. And Elaine, if you'll read down the report chain on the record. Ordinance number 16-90.
Ordinance number 16-90. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $4 million for the purpose of paying the cost of enhancing the municipal fire safety facilities by constructing, furnishing, and equipping a new fire station, and otherwise improving the site, therefore, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto, and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause, this ordinance is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, property, health, safety, and welfare of the city, and for the further reason that this ordinance is required to be immediately effective in order to issue and sell the bonds, which is necessary to enable the city to timely enter into contracts for the construction of the improvement, and to coordinate the sale of the bonds with other bonds of the city. Wherefore, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Thank you. Mr. Stotzer?
This ordinance authorizes the issue of bonds to finance the construction of our fourth fire station on southeast quadrant of the city. It might be a few months yet, probably in 2017, before that project gets moved along, but I wanted to take advantage of the favorable interest rates, get out ahead of the project a little bit, and issuing the bonds right now. Typically, we would construct the building, issue short-term notes, and then come back at some point afterwards and issue bonds, but we have a little flexibility, since we have a fund balance in the fire fund, even if the ultimate project costs more than $4 million, we're still okay borrowing that $4 million portion. That's what I planned with some of our cash flow analysis. This project was planned for and budgeted for in 2016. Entertained, any questions you may have?
Any questions?
I just have a comment, and I made it the last time. I think we need to put a sign out there for future science station four as soon as possible.
We've talked about that a few times, gentlemen.
Yes.
Okay, so is there a motion for ordinance 16-90?
I move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on 16-90. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mrs. Keller. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?[1669.12]
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mrs. Keller. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Degenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for the approval of the emergency clause.
Thought you were missing it, second.
On ordinance 16-90.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mrs. Keller. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Degenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
And I move for the approval of ordinance 16-90. Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mrs. Keller. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Degenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. And item 15 is, second, reading of ordinance number 16-91. If you'll please read this on the record.
Ordinance number 16-91, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $400,000 for the purpose of paying the cost of renovating, rehabilitating, and otherwise improving the city's public works building by replacing the roof, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto, and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause, this ordinance is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, property, health, safety, and welfare of the city, and for the further reason that this ordinance is required to be immediately effective in order to issue and sell the bonds, which is necessary to enable the city to timely enter into contracts for the construction of the improvement, and to coordinate the sale of the bonds with other bonds of the city, wherefore this ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Thank you. Mr. Stelter?
Thank you. This is the third portion of what will be a combined $8.65 million bond issue, and the purpose was for the maintenance improvements primarily to the roof at the public works facility. Again, this has been, was budgeted, and it was anticipated that we would borrow money to complete the project. The term on it will probably be eight to 10 years, just to give us an opportunity to spread that cost over a few more years, since we're going to do the bond issue anyways. Entertain any questions you may have?
But the book was only $450,000, right?
Right.
Just the way you say that word of that is like, oh my gosh. I knew a word there for a second. Any other questions? What is the wish of council on ordinance 16-91?
Motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance 16-91. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hellinger, second by Mrs. Keller. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Degenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
An ordinance to enact the emergency clause on ordinance 16-91. Second.
Motion by Mr. Hellinger, second by Mrs. Keller. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Degenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance 16-91. Second.
Motion by Mr. Hellinger, second by Mrs. Keller. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Degenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr? Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. And item 16. If you'll please read this on the record.
Resolution number 16-43, a resolution adopting the 2017 through 2021 five-year capital improvement program.
And you know that there's a work session next Monday night to go over this?
6:30.
6:30. What'd you say?
It's on my phone, that's all.
Okay. Okay, city manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have one thing to report to council. Staff has been working on the pilot program for the downtown refuse issues, and we have successfully negotiated two, well, we have negotiated one agreement, the other agreement is in the hands of the other property owner, with two south-side, south-block business property owners, to which we can move public dumpsters onto their parking lots, and then that way we can clean up the south side. Part of the agreement is that their tenants must use that, they may not put their trash out front anymore, and we are supplementing them for allowing us to put these dumpsters. Now, this is just the beginning, it's a pilot program, we're going to see how it goes, but I have to say the two property owners were more than willing to work with us, and they were excited to be a part of trying to find a solution to this, so.